I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Heisler.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Ridgewitz.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Davidson. Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Orlett.
Here.
Alderman Schneider.
Here.
Everyone's present. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitritt.
Here.
Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider. Leander Spearmann.
Here.
Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belleville.
Here.
City Treasurer Dean Hart.
Here.
Chief Clay and Chuck Schaefer excused. At this time, just before we do the pledge, just a reminder this evening to everyone, you know, the meetings are now videotaped, and I would remind aldermen to please use the microphones and speak into the microphones, and as well, when we get to public participation, that everyone would go to the microphone after they're called on and speak loud and clear. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask you, note Jim Schneider is here. I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I will open public participation. If you'd like to speak this evening, raise your hand. I will recognize you, and then you'd step up to the microphone and give your name and address. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Public hearing is first. We have them so seldom, I forgot that we have a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And the public hearing this evening is pertaining to the annexation of the Shrine of Our Lady of the Snows property, which is approximately, Chris, 406 acres? 406 acres, 177 acres on the north side of Route 15 and the remainder on the south side. I now open the public hearing and ask if anyone this evening would like to address the console, this body, with any questions, concerns of this. Yes, sir, in the back of the room.
Stuart Laner, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. I was a member, I'm still a member, at the Caseyville Gun Club, and some sharpie come in there, around Collinsville and Caseyville, and had great big plans of building a high-end subdivision, so after getting all the scamming, all the free money he could get out of the taxpayers of Caseyville and Collinsville, and costing the gun club members their property, their shooting range, and lost millions of dollars all told. Everybody involved in it, except the scammer, lost millions. And all, he bulldozed around there for a couple of months, and then all of a sudden, he left. Now...
Is this got to do with the Shrine property?
Yeah. They say they're gonna build four hotels.
No, they said two.
Okay, two hotels and four restaurants. Is, in Belleville, I noticed they do a feasibility study for almost the simplest things. Did anybody ever think to do a feasibility study on just where these, all these customers are gonna come from for these hotels and restaurants?
I can assure you, the Shrine and this developer have been doing their due diligence for well over a year, and they're working together, so I can...
But where are the customers gonna come from?
Well, I think, I think they've got, they've got their game plan and their feasibility study there, but that, I can't answer that specifically tonight, Stuart, but believe me, they've studied this long and hard.
Well, you can study it to death, and it ain't gonna bring any customers to your restaurant.
Okay.
That's my fault. Thank you.
Next gentleman over here.
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Eight weeks ago, the mayor stated, "Trust me, details will be forthcoming in two weeks." To date, few details have been announced to the public. Even this agreement has the language, "You are hereby notified that this proposal, proposed annexation agreement may be changed, altered, modified, amended, or redrafted in its entirety after this hearing. Why can't the public be informed by stating honestly, 'This is the agreement, and we won't modify it'? Thank you."
Okay, that's, your comments are well appreciated. However, I just wanna say to the public, this is an annexation and not a development agreement. So, we're not down to all the development, okay?
I'm reading from the annexation.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, okay. That language is statutory, as the attorney just said. You have to give general purpose, okay? But it's statutory. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna close, yes, sir, back of the, now this is per the, the public hearing is about the Shrine only right now. This isn't general public participation. Okay, I just wanna make sure you knew what, you know, since you stepped in there a little late, I wanna make sure you didn't get mixed up. We'll go back to public participation in just a moment. Is there any other comments or questions about the annexation of the Shrine property, the 400, potential, right, estimated 406 acres? Hearing none, I will close public, this public hearing. Okay, now, we will go into public participation for the regular meeting, and if someone has something additional to say, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Yes, sir.
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Now quote from the annexation agreement. A number of, the language in here has me concerned. Things like the parking space requirements shall not apply. Green space requirements shall not apply. Building permits shall be issued without payment. City will waive all payments and review fees. Open burning shall be allowed in this area. The other part, there's a section in here that reads, "It is agreed to the extent permitted by the law, the terms and provision of this agreement supersedes the provisions of any ordinances, codes, or regulations of the city." There's another section that says, "The city shall rebate utility taxes for five years." This agreement shall govern over the ordinances and future ones that are changed. It's also stated that you're agreeing tonight to issue the liquor licenses. You don't know who you're issuing them to, what corporations, what people, what background checks, but according to this, you're agreeing that they will get liquor licenses. And then there's the agreement in here that the city, at its own expense, taxpayers' expense, shall upgrade the sewer system to meet the needs of this development. And we need to accommodate two hotels, four restaurants, one convenience store, and all other development in the area, and that is done at taxpayers' expense. There's also a item on the agenda tonight for $70,000 to fill out the TIF application. I have to say that reading through this agreement, I see no downside for the owners of the property. There's no promise should that they not build the hotels or the development not come, that they repay the taxpayers. And a little history, 1999, TIF 10 was formed with the promise that we would have a hotel and a conference center south on Route 159, along with golf courses. It never happened. In 2006, TIF 16 was formed, the Belleville Crossing, with the understanding that if we built it up, we'd get a hotel out on Route 15, and it would spur development in that outlying area. It hasn't happened. And now in 2014, we're looking at creating yet another TIF. All the taxpayers get is another, "Trust me, this is the deal that will make a difference and spur development." Thank you.
Yes, sir, you have a question for this, this particular portion of public participation?
I've got a question for everything that happens up here. Stuart Laner, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. I think the will of the people, especially in Ward 2, have been totally trampled on. Linda Holt was our alderman, and she was a good alderman. She was not one of these bobbleheads, and now...
Okay, Stuart, you're entitled to your opinion. But I'm gonna tell you, you know, after our little training and Parliament's procedure, the lady stood right here and told me, "Do not allow people to run other people down." Now, when you start talking about bobbleheads and giving names and running down people, I'm not gonna tolerate it. If you have something you'd like to finish saying, I will listen, but if you step out of bounds, you're done. You sit down.
Okay.
Okay? We're gonna be nice, and we're gonna have character. Now proceed.
Fine. I just think that a person on a little bit more, in her political philosophy, should've been chosen an independent, a black person, a Hispanic, but to go and appoint somebody that already won, or lost the election, which means that the people of Ward 2 wasn't too happy with her to begin with. So, I just think the point was 110% political. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Rose Wilson, 322 West Ice Street, and I'm just here to support Dorothy Meyer. She was instrumental in a lot of developments in the Franklin neighborhood. She didn't just live on the outside and looked in, she was right in the middle of it, and she was responsible for a lot of changes. Dorothy worked hard and diligently. If she might've lost the election by two votes this last time, but there's a lot of people in the Franklin neighborhood that still support her and miss her, and I'm one of them. You would call, you could count that she did her job, and she did it diligently, and if she couldn't get something done, she always had an explanation. And Dorothy attended virtually every Franklin neighborhood safety committee meeting in those 16 years that we had. So, my neighborhood, and I strongly endorse the reseating of Dorothy Meyer. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation. Okay. This time, we go to the portion of the meeting, that's presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first order of business, I will ask for a motion to approve my recommendation of appointing Dorothy Meyer, 200 North 28th Street, to serve as the remainder of the term of Ward 2 alderman, to fill the vacancy that's been made with Melinda Holt moving to Oregon. Dorothy, will assume the vacated committee assignments as currently were held by Melinda. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I would like to make the motion that we approved Dorothy Meyer. I'm very happy she's coming back. Yes, I won in the election, but I won by two votes, and I'll tell you a secret. I voted for myself, and my husband voted for me, I'm pretty sure. So, there's the two. Half of the people that voted in our ward voted for Dorothy. Now, we had our differences, I had some misunderstandings, and I clarified it. Dorothy has, I've talked to her several times and gotten advice, and I think she will be good for the ward, but she'll be good for Belleville, because she also shares a vision that we need to look ahead, and we need to see what the future holds. We don't look at what happens tonight, we look at what's gonna happen 10 years down the road, and she's able to do that. She's good for Ward 2, she's good for the city of Belleville.
So, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Kinsella.
That was my discussion.
Do I hear discussion?
I did that.
You had a motion and discussion?
Yeah.
So, is there nothing further? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Abstain.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galetti.
Abstain.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Abstain.
The ayes have, what's the count?
10 to 2 with 3 abstaining.
10 to 2 and 3 abstaining. Dorothy Meyer, congratulations. Step forward, please. We, we have the privilege tonight to have Judge Julie Gomrich from St. Clair County, 20th Judicial Circuit here, and she has agreed to swear Dorothy in, so Judge, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and directing Dorothy to take the oath. You can do that microphone right there if the two of you like to. You can come have my seat if you like.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dorothy Meyer. I, Dorothy Meyer. Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully and promptly perform the duties of my office. That I will faithfully and promptly perform the duties of my office. Of alderman, Ward 2, within and for the city of Belleville. Alderman, Ward 2, within and for the city of Belleville. In the county of St. Clair, state of Illinois. The county of St. Clair, state of Illinois. According to the law, and to the best of my understanding. According to the law and the best of my understanding. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Belleville. The Charter and ordinances of the city of Belleville. So, help me God. So, help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, Dorothy, if you'll get your stuff and take your seat. Okay. Judge Gomrich, once again, thank you. Okay, at this time, I have a bittersweet presentation. We've been talking the last several days around the office, as you probably know by now, that our very faithful servant, Emily Foltz, is moving on to bigger and better things. And Emily, would you step forward as I come down to make the presentation?
Emily's like one of these department heads I've had and employees that I feel like one of my kids. Not because she's a kid like, but because she, she's been somebody that I admired. She's been here eight years. Started at an entry-level position, and has done nothing, I can't think of another person who's just like her in many ways, but has done nothing but taken on every job, every task, with the positive that to do it to the best of her ability, plus some. And lived public service and served to the Lord. So, tonight, Emily, we are sad to see you go, very happy for you, and talking to you about some of the adventures coming. I'm very humbled. You sound like, you do sound like one of my kids, with a travel, although my oldest, who just got home yesterday, his last adventure wasn't as quite as exciting. It was exciting, but not quite as a planned trip going to Afghanistan, but I think yours sounded pretty good. This presentation is to Director Emily Foltz, in grateful appreciation for eight years of dedicated service and leadership to the city of Belleville, having already developed its department planning and zoning department, 2006, 2014. Let me just say that during the time recently, we won top awards for our comprehensive plan. We tackled an immense amount of development while she'd been here, a couple shopping centers, a downtown streetscape. We're just starting with re-cutting ordinances. She has led the way on a lot of things, the Shrine project, she has been at the Helmut, and we're gonna miss her. We wish her well. Can I present this to you?
Okay. And now I ask for one more appointment. I'd ask for this time, a motion to appoint, to fill a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Board to serve a five-year term, Teresa M. Hessel. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Kinsella. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt. D-Meyer, I'm sorry. Give me a couple times.
That's okay. Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Teresa, you wanna stand up? Congratulations, thank you. Just, just to let you guys know, Teresa's not new by any means to helping. She played a very, very big role, as many of you in this room, several of you in this room, in the 200th Anniversary Executive Committee, and did a ton of work, and has served on some other subcommittees we've had. And she has a lot of love for the Parks and Recreation Program, so I think she'll do very well on here, and she graciously accepted my request. So, thank you, and Debbie will touch base with you about the meetings and what you, you know, what's going on. So, thank you so much for agreeing to serve. Okay, we move on now to the regular part of the meeting. We have the console meeting minutes of December 1st, 2014. What's your pleasure? Alderman Schmidt.
I'm moving accept and file the minutes as.
We have a motion by Alderman Schmidt to accept and file, second by Alderman Heisler. Do we have discussion on the minutes? Yes, sir?
Yes, Your Honor, on page 5, the second last paragraph where it states Alderman Sillsby made a motion, second by Alderman blank. I was the one that seconded that motion.
Okay, will you note that? Everybody note that? Do we have any further? All in favor of accepting and filing the minutes from December 1st, with that addition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to claims, payroll, and disbursements. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Seibert will yield to you. Motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Heisler, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. If no one objects, I'd ask for a motion to combine and accept and file the next two reports, the treasurer's report of city of Belleville funds and statement of cash and investments for November 2014, and the housing report, cash receipts fiscal year 2014-15 through November 2014.
I'm moving accept and file.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella to accept those two reports and file. Alderman Heisler, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oral reports, economic development. Alderman Kinsella?
We have a motion to approve an annexation agreement with the Oblate Real Estate Trust, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated, Missionary Oblates of Mary Immaculate, and Our Lady of the Snows Foundation Incorporated, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Your Honor. First question I got, you know, I got the annexation agreement, and which parts of this agreement are part of 11-A1, and which is part of 11-A2? Because we got two separate motions here. We're gonna have two separate motions, but are they both filed with approval in this one document?
No, the 11-A1 is the annexation agreement upon which we had the public hearing. 11-A2 is the corresponding petition for annexation that was filed by the record owners of the property.
Okay, that must not have been, is that...
Well, there's an ordinance, there's a separate ordinance for each. They're, they're addressed pursuant to separate provisions within the municipal code.
Okay, I get that. The first paragraph of page 2, and I just wanna state to the public, and the mayor knows this, you know, this is a very, very tough decision tonight, because we're agreeing to permit, for example, the C Store Fuel Station themed restaurants, special uses. I got to meet with the developers at 2:45 today for 45 minutes, and, you know, we really haven't been spoon-fed this thing through this whole process, and then today we got basically a shovel full of information, and I've had four hours to try to digest this. I wanna ask the attorney, where it says, "Whereas the petitioners have expanded substantial sums of money and have materially altered their position and reliance on the execution of this agreement and performance of its terms and provisions by the city," it is, if this doesn't go through, are we liable for anything that they have done?
With respect to this, are you on the first whereas?
I'm on page 2. The 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, whereas.
That's a demonstration of consideration. You know, if this doesn't go through, it depends upon, if you look under the remedies section, it would depend upon the cause. If the, if the project did not go through, through no fault of the city, then there would not be any, any liability. I mean, this is a demonstration of consideration for the agreement on the part of the petitioner.
Okay. I move to page 4. I mean, it was addressed in the public portion, sections A and B. I'm presuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is pertaining to the existing and not the future?
The annexation agreement...
In other words, we're grandfathering the existing...
Yeah.
Yes.
And I would note for everybody's information that there are references throughout the agreement to the improved parcels versus the unimproved parcels. The improved parcels being the parcels south of Route 15.
The current existing shrine.
The unimproved being north. So, it's oftentimes when you have an annexation of existing, built-out property, you will provide for what is grandfathering, because they've already have their parking lots laid out.
Correct.
They already have their buildings built, that type of thing.
Right. So, I, you know, I mean, go ahead, Mayor, thanks.
The one question that was raised earlier that I think you're getting to, the only way, place we agreed to waive any permits is in the existing shrine, which is the religious side, where they already have been existing all these years. We agree to some of these exceptions in that side only. Nothing on the other side. On the other side, a new development, all permitting, all fees, all tap-ons, all everything, is totally in place like any other development. There's no exceptions over there, with the one exception, the building that's carved out, which is currently, I believe, like the print shop, that we agreed that if that building, you know, that's, that's a current building that involves the ministry, that that would have some consideration to that. Other than that, the vast majority of the 177 acres on the north side, where the disdevelopment is to take place potentially, is all subject to current fees and regulations and et cetera.
Well, Mayor, then I'm confused, because I go to page 6, page 6, item E, and again, I may be wrong, because, you know, we didn't get this till late Friday, and trying to decipher all this, but the, page 6, item E, the last sentence is, "The north facility to such sanitary sewer in city shall not impose any tampon or other connection fees or other requirements."
Just to the building, just to the building there at the, the print shop. If they ever wanted to tap on to the sewer at that building... wanted to tap on to the sewer at that building, which is a part of the religious, part of the shrine, we agreed in our, in our, in our conversations of the annexation agreement that we would waive that one and that one only. But nothing for new restaurants potentially, or hotels, or anything of that nature. That would all be treated like any other business deal.
Okay.
Okay?
Um, that, that's, that's what I thought, but I want to make sure.
And, and the sewer that was mentioned, yes, we are going to recommend, as we move forward, to install the sewer, the main line, and to bring it up for them to hook up. But we will then also charge all the tap-on fees and all the sewer rates that we charge anyone else. So, that will help cover, and will, in a matter of a reasonable period of time, Royce and I have had numerous conversations about this, uh, this will greatly, uh, deal with that business aspect of, of the sewer. Plus, it's gonna also open up other potential development and other sewer-ing in that area. So, it's, it's something no different than what this council took on when we laid the sewer to go out to the new Belville West High School. We looked with a vision of sewer-ing other areas, and we upscaled it, upsized it, and it's kind of a similar visionary thing that we're proposing here. But they will pay for the sewer tap-ons, et cetera.
Can you, Mayor, enlighten me more on the, the following paragraph, F, as it relates to basically what would be construed as incentives in relation to the utility tax rebates and why?
What we did there, to, to, when we were down into some of the final negotiation, the, the shrine currently pays no utility tax. Uh, the county has no such, um, situation. So, what we, in discussing this, they have, they have nothing in their budget to plan for that current change, because it will be, uh, definitely X amount of dollars based on the, our, what we charge for utility tax, and we've had that throughout the rest of the city. What we believe to be fair is that we would rebate it for a five-year period. After that, they have to pay it on the shrine side of the, of the ministry, just like everybody else. But that'll give them a chance to plan for it, budget for it, and develop it into their system, because they are, you know, doing some other things far as some other improvements as they go anyway. And that was one of the things that we did agree. Far as the, the, far as the burning, we agreed, if you look in there, that they would confer with the fire chief, which is really not much different than what they did before with, I'm sure, Signal Hill. They didn't just go out there and burn on, they, they were, uh, they, they were, but they have, you know, there is a lot of out area, and they had some situations that they might have that. We, we didn't really, this, this is not, um, this, this agreement was not like we gave them carte blanche. It was talked through, all these different things were talked through, to try to help them that we don't stop some of their existing ministries, because some of them, they have some outdoor activities, and they have some different things that they've been providing for 50 years out there. So, uh, you know, this was all well thought out, and, uh, it's not meant to, but the, but the utility tax is something that we felt that was, that, that was an issue with us as we were getting down to the final negotiation, and we finally compromised on proposing a five-year rebate, and then at that time, they would pay. Now, on the new side, they'll pay the utility tax right off the bat to developer. That's not, you know, that's not being rebated, that's, that's gonna go right away.
The, the, I mean, yeah, the, the other, I mean, the, what the mission is doing, we certainly, I, I'm, as you know, a Roman Catholic, I, I certainly support everything that the, the shrine does out there, and, and proud to have that, uh, in our area and, and, possibly in our community here. Uh, redirect question to the attorney at page 10. Just curious, uh, Mr. Harner, it says that, uh, wa- waiver of trial by jury, is that standard, and, and why, if, if this would forever end up in litigation, I, I'm not familiar with seeing that type of thing, but why would we want...
It's pretty common in agreements, because it's considered, uh, similar to arbitration provisions, it's considered to be an ex, a way to expedite resolution.
You don't have no problems with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, um, and the last one, and I say the last one, which is the major one, is page five, C. Uh, well, it does note that, that the parcels will remain private, in other words, so the public knows we are not gonna be maintaining the roads in, in the existing, uh, shrine. Uh, but the item C on page five at the bottom, under special agreements, "The city so diligently pursue approval of State of Illinois for expansion of the city's enterprise zone to include the property in form and substance satisfactory to the city." I, I'm not, uh, necessarily seeing a, a problem with the enterprise zone, but as I told you earlier today, and then there's language back on, uh, page eight, uh, and we're gonna discuss that with, uh, item 11 dash A3. I, looking at this agreement, uh, Your Honor, I, I, I could support the annexation agreement. I, I'm, see no problem with the, uh, uh, enterprise zone, but I do believe the overwhelming majority of, of the people in, that, that I've talked to, that I represent in Ward Five, have concerns of, of, uh, adding another TIF. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. But a- as we said in the small groups we talked in, so everybody understands, this TIF is not, understand one thing. First of all, what we're saying in the annexation agreement is that we are pledging to, and we're gonna endeavor to attempt to create a TIF in a business district and expanding enterprise zone. We're, we're gonna do everything in our ability to, to, to do this, because they need that to make this project go forward. It's very clear, the but far is very clear, as explained by the developer today, to many of you. However, um, understand, there is no money, when you get, when we get down the road to the development agreement, and I just don't want people leaving here tonight misconstrued, there is no money that will be given ahead of time. They have to do all the developing. It will be a rebate after they pay their taxes, and it will be the 1% on the business district, just like we have in several other areas. If people don't shop there, they don't get the tax. You know, there's nobody handing them any check or any money. They have to do the developing, then if they follow all the rules and this, all these steps are approved by the city council, then they would get rebated accordingly. So, I don't want people to think that the city and other tax, uh, portions of the city are, we're preparing to lay out a project here that we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. That is not the case. This will be a standalone TIF if it all passes everybody, all the steps, and it will have to pay their taxes, and right now, understand, there's not a dime of property tax paid on this property. It's, it's unincorporated in the county, and it's not taxable, because it's under the Oblates.
Predominantly.
Predominantly. There is a small part, and we will adjust that, uh, to our friends with the fire district, et cetera, everywhere we have to, by law, we will work with you and take care of that.
But, Your Honor, my, my, my key point on that, it comes down philosophically, and you and I have discussed this, we've debated it, uh, um, I've, I've put things together in black and white, and the bottom line is that, uh, when you have TIFs within your assessed valuation of your city, and other taxing entities need to raise their levies for whatever reason, TIFs ultimately cause an impact and, and a higher raise in property tax to all people, whether you're in a TIF or not. And that, that is a fact.
You're, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, Mr. Mr. Hayden, and, uh, I just, I know this new development brings great potential to grow the city, bring in new sales tax, bring in new people. It, it's got a chance to do wonderful things for us on the Route 15 corridor. Jobs, up to, we heard today, up to possibly, when it's, when it's up and running, this first full stage, possibly up to 400 jobs. Sales tax for the city that we can use for hiring, et cetera, policemen, et cetera. It, it's got such potential. Uh, plus, it also will be a great asset to the shrine. Alderman Schneider?
Yes, I have two questions. Uh, this agreement has, we are, if we say yes to this, it has nothing to do with creating the new TIF. This is just to bring the shrine into the city limits.
This is an annexation agreement tonight, but it says in here that we will endeavor, correct, Mr. Harner?
Explain that, please.
I'm getting the legal, the man we pay for the legal advice right here to repeat exactly how that's worded.
Trying to find the section. It, it contemplates a TIF in a business district, and if not, if, if those don't come to fruition, that can, the contract can be voided by the petitioner, which means you'd end up with a, a disconnection.
It, it could be, and they could...
So, this shrine would no longer be in the city limits, they would go back to town?
That, that's a possibility.
Potentially, potentially, yeah, but it's a...
Okay, you were talking about sales tax. What will it do, what will the sales tax be out there when, um, this is all done? Is it going, is our sales tax gonna raise? Because, um, last city council meeting, you asked the finance director, are, do we have the highest sales tax? Well, I have to beg the difference, because if we do not have the highest sales tax, our Target and our Walmart is overcharging the people. Because today I went to two Walmarts and three Targets. The Walmart in Belville is nine, for non-food, and I bought the same item from every place, which is a non-food item, is 9.1%. Um, so Walmart in O'Fallon is 7.850. So then I went to the three Targets and bought the same item. Um, the Shiloh is 7.350. Fairview Heights is 8.350. Here we go again with Belville, 9.1. Why are we charging the highest sales tax?
Those areas that you just mentioned have a business district tax, a 1%. Jamie, I'm gonna call on you for the...
Are you saying much shopping in Granite City, or are those tax rates are higher?
This is for the people that have to shop in Belville at the everyday store, things that they need. You have a lot of people that aren't gonna drive to Granite City. I'm talking about our people, we're supposed to shop in Belville.
The point was that we have the highest sales tax rate, that's not true. Because there are communities around that have higher, for instance, Granite City and all.
But we don't, our people don't go to Granite City. We want our people to stay in the city of Belville.
Who says our people go to Shiloh with very high?
Well, I'm just going to the very close areas. Granite City is further away. So, you're saying these TIFs and these development agreements will no doubt make our sales tax higher?
It will, if they, if we approve a business district, it will go up 1% like our other three business districts currently do.
Only in that district, not throughout the city.
Only in that district, nowhere else.
But these, these are the stores where people do their everyday shopping. Your Walmart and Target is where people do their everyday shopping. This isn't a specialty store. This is where they go in. Target now has grocery, more grocery items than that.
And that's a different tax.
So, they're gonna do all their shopping at one time, which grocery items is all the same, straight across the board. But your non-food items, we have the highest sales tax. You're, when you check out, you're paying the highest sales tax.
I, I don't disagree that we are near the top, but we are not the highest.
We're at the highest.
In, in southwestern Illinois, we are not the highest.
How many people's gonna go to the southwestern Illinois? How many miles away to do their shopping, everyday shopping for groceries?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, Jamie and I are just telling you, when we survey the area, uh, of Madison and St. Clair County, we are not the highest. We are, we, we do have a higher sales tax than some.
At our city stores.
Okay, and, and only have...
It shouldn't have been said the city of Belville doesn't have the highest sales tax.
Okay, if, if you, but, but...
For our Target and Walmarts and the surrounding area.
Okay. Mr. Schuster?
Uh, when, i- if the shrine, the current shrine property comes in, their sales tax rate will go up a little, because the city's rate will be attached to that. It will be 8.1%. Uh, between the, uh, restaurant and the gift shop, the city will get about $52,000 a year in sales tax from just that, the existing complex. Uh, on the north side of this development occurs, and when everything's up and running, uh, at full capacity, if, if they meet their projections, it'll be near a half million dollars in sales tax a year.
But we're charging the people a higher sales tax to make this. We want the people to stay in Belville shopping. So, why would we want...
You're talking about 1% on, uh, we can disagree all night, and we probably would, uh, but, you know, it'll be 1% of your overall bill on items that are not food. Uh, so, it, while you're, you're talking 8 to 9%, uh, it is a high rate, but, uh, when you get down to the pennies of it, it's not really all that much.
So, in other words, when we have a TIF in these development agreements, it affects the taxpayers always if they shop in these businesses?
The TIF does not affect the sales tax. The only thing affects the sales tax is the 1% business district tax, the business district overlay that's being, uh, once again here, asked to be considered. But the TIF does not increase the sales tax. Has nothing to do with the sales tax. They have to pay their property tax, and then they, then we agree to rebate a percentage of it.
We'll be checking on these. Did we not have a hotel on West Main Street that's gone, or motel?
I'm not sure, I'm not following you.
Uh, Lindenwood bought it.
Okay, yes.
Did we not give them development agreements in that?
I, I think you're well aware that there was some, and there's still, that there's still some potential, they're trying to recoup part of that, right, Eric?
Yeah.
But that, that's been shared with you, that's, that's no secret. Okay, where were we at? Uh, we are back here to, uh, help me, we're in a motion, right, to, uh, to prove the, to prove the first one on 11A, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, a yes, a aye, is to approve the annexation agreement with the Oblate Real Estate Trust, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers, Inc., Missionary Oblates and Mary Immaculate, and Our Lady of the Snows Foundation, Inc. Okay? This does need?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, which will be...
Corporate authorities.
Of the carpet authorities.
Which includes you.
Which includes me, so, uh, needs 12 votes to pass, okay? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
You got it.
Well, there you go, Chris. Call Father Tom. Um, okay, we moved to the next one. I'd ask for a motion to approve an annexation petition with the Oblate Real Estate Trust, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers, Inc., Missionary Oblates of Ameri- Mary, Ma- Mary Immaculate of our, and Our Lady of Snows Foundation, Inc. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on the second part. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve the Technical Services Contract with Economic Development Resources. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear discussion? Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor, on, on 11A3, since this is the technical agreement that's, uh, gonna explore the TIF, and I've stated my views on TIF, that's, as I always do, explain my vote, that's why I will be voting no.
Okay, Mr. Eric, you want to explain this one thing you might find a little bit interesting if you hadn't picked up on this, on the total cost, how this is going?
Right, the, the contract you have in front of you is for 70,000. However, uh, with the enterprise zone, earlier this year you passed a, a policy of, uh, fees for developments that, uh, requests to expand the existing zone, uh, and that, that fee is half a percent of the, the value of the building materials in the proposed development, or $50,000 or whatever's less. In this case, it would be 50,000. So, the developer would pay $50,000 of this cost.
So, so 50 of the 70,000 dollar fee that we're voting on here right now will be covered, will be handled by the developer. So, everyone understands that. You know, once again, this is not just all taking from the city, this is the way we planned that when we expanded that, that proposal for the enterprise zone. Okay? With that said, if there's no other questions, I ask for a roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
No.
Eyes have it. Mike Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Mass Pursuer Committee, I'd like to make the following motion. Approve Change Order Number One for the First Flush Basin Sludge Removal in the Amount of $49,800 from Metro Ag Incorporated. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2014 tax levy. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Heisler, do I hear discussion? Yes, sir.
Can we have the Finance Director just give a little brief explanation-
Sure.
Okay, in each of your packets, you should have received a memo as well as the proposed tax levy for 2014. Like in most years, the main reason for a small increase is the three pensions, the fire pension, the police pension, and I M R F, which covers the rest of the employees of the city. The fireman and police pensions are based on the actuary studies that are done by an independent actuary. They come up with, based on state statute, the required minimum contributions to the plan, which historically we've always levied for. The fireman's pension went up over 200,000 based on that actuary study, and the police pension luckily went down about 250,000. Some of the other items like I M R F and liability, we increased slightly to cover those expenses. Playground and Recreation and Library stayed flat with last year. So overall, our change in levy request from the prior year extension is at a 0.37 percent increase. The St. Clair County Assessors Office has told me they're anticipating that the EAV of the city is gonna go down slightly again based on the state multipliers. They're looking at about a 1.5 percent decrease they're anticipating. So that was worked into these estimated rates. So based on those estimates, and again, those are estimates until the Assessors Office finalizes the EAV, on a $100,000 house, that would be about a $13 increase for the year.
Answer your questions, and then understand once again, funding the pensions, we have statutory requirements, and we certainly have been following them for many years, and we wanna make sure the pensions get fully funded.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, to approve the 2014 tax levy. Hearing no other questions, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Alderman Ridgewitz.
Make a motion to accept the bid proposal from Grassroots Lawn Care for the grass mowing and yard maintenance contract for the years 2015 through 2017.
Motion by Alderman Ridgewitz, second by Alderman Hayden. It's coming from the Health and Housing Committee. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Kinsella.
Yes, sir, I make a motion designating the ordinance for the city's enterprise zone. I so moved.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Kinsella.
I move that we authorize an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Electrical Code.
We have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Kinsella.
I move we authorize an ordinance amending Chapter 9, Boards and Commissions Historical Commission. So moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, once again, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I knew you were gonna vote for that, Dorothy, because you don't have to go to a meeting now. So that was, that was the one I could guarantee, that one. Alderman Kinsella, you have one more.
I move we have an ordinance authorizing an annexation agreement with Oblate Real Estate Trust, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated, Missionary Oblates of Mary Immaculate and Our Lady of the Snow's Foundation Incorporated. The ordinance approves annexing certain territory. I so moved.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to table the next item, and from Streets and Grades, Mr. Seibert, because the meeting was canceled tonight, it wasn't properly advertised, so we couldn't hold the meeting. So do you agree to postpone, to cancel this, postpone this for one?
Make that motion, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden, to postpone to the next meeting. All in favor of this, I shouldn't say that. Postpone until after Streets and Grades has heard this motion. Is that agreeable?
That's correct.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Communications.
12A, motion to approve request from St. Clair County Bar Association to hold their 14th Annual Law Day Run Walk and 1K Youth Fund Run on May 2nd, 2015, starting at 9:00 a.m., and including temporary road closures, police protection, street department assistance, et cetera.
Keep moving.
12B, request from Belleville October Festival, their 2015 festival on the public square on Friday, September 18th, 2015, and Saturday, September 19th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. both days. 12C, request from Ogles Watch Neighborhood Associations to hold their 5K on Saturday, October 24th, 2015. The 5K will be held in the Ogles subdivision, starting and ending at St. Matthew's United Methodist Church.
Alderman Hayden.
Motion to approve Items 12A, B, and C, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Seibert, to approve those three communications as just read. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of those communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We move on. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3207, 3208, and 3209. So moved. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Kinsella, to read those resolutions by title only.
And as a group.
And as a group, is that okay with everybody?
I probably need to abstain from Resolution 3209 as I am employing the county.
Okay, so let's, let's read the two, first two ones, the first two together if we could. All in favor of reading the first two by title only, the first two resolutions, 3207, 3208, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
14A, Resolution Number 3207, Resolution Amending the Annual Budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2014 and ending on the 30th day of April 2015. 14B, Resolution Number 3208, Resolution Amending the Annual Budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2014 and ending on 30th day of April 2015.
Motion to approve Resolution 3207 and 3208.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman White, do I hear discussion on those two resolutions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for, to read 3209 by title only.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Kinsella. All in favor of reading 32, Resolution 3209 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
14C, Resolution Number 3209, Resolution Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreement for Property Transfers Between the City of Belleville, Illinois and the St. Clair County Public Building Commission.
Motion to approve Resolution 3209.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Abstain.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Motion carries. Ordinances. I'd ask for a motion to read seventy-eight twenty-six, seventy-eight twenty-seven, seventy-eight twenty-eight, and seventy-eight twenty-nine, seventy-eight thirty, seventy-eight thirty-one, and seventy-eight thirty-two by title only. Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Yes, sir.
Seventy-eight thirty-two, I request that be read separately, there's a word change.
Okay, let's do this first of all. Let's get a second to read them by title only. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman, uh, Seibert, to read by title only. Um, you wanna read the last one separately, is that correct?
It just needs a correction.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's, let's read the first group through seventy-two, uh, seventy-eight thirty-one by title only and as...
Can I get A separated?
What's that?
Can I get A read separately?
Which one you wanna separate?
Twenty-six, the first one.
Okay, you wanna read that? Okay, let's start off by reading, uh, twenty-six, uh, by title only. Let's start with that one right there, okay? Is that, okay, Alderman Sillsby, and a second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of reading ordinance seventy-eight twenty-six by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No, I just have a question for one.
For this one here?
No.
Like, can we vote on this?
You made a comment that Dorothy doesn't have to attend the historical, um, meetings.
Is that...
And you didn't include me, so do I have to attend the...
No, no, both Aldermen, as you know, in that, in that, are, are now excluded from